Keep it nice. Oh, that's good.
Yeah, if I didn't want to get charged with, with being a drug dealer, I could have some of that stuff.
How you guys phrase it?
Yeah, my stomach is still sitting here saying, you ate all that food. It was good though. I thoroughly enjoyed it and I was grateful.
Me too.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
You're on G H T?
Yes.
Yeah, they, I had.
No executive session?
Yes, it was.
No executive session? Tell us, Jesus.
Yes, and they hope we can make it out of here.
Amen.
Mics are hot, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you.
I get the idea.
Tom, Tom. Well, I'm waiting at your parking lot, but I couldn't see you through the limo.
Was it legal? Is it legal?
Maybe.
Just the silence. Oh, that's okay.
Do we, we don't have an executive session, are we doing?
I'm sorry, sir.
We don't have an executive session.
That's it. He's trying to get Clay on the phone.
Is, is Clay joining us on the phone? I didn't think so.
He's on tunes.
I'm still here.
It's Clay with us.
He's here. Clay's on.
I don't see his picture.
I'm still here.
Hey, there he is.
Okay, my bad.
No, no, I'm glad you said something. I didn't know it was, I'd have been like, what's that weird noise? All right. Good evening and welcome to the Spalding County Board of Commissioners, December first, twenty twenty five, a regular meeting.
It should be going on now.
All right, Clay, you gotta mute yourselves, uh, because we're, we're hearing you. There we go. Um, I would ask that everyone silence your cell phones and other electronic devices, followed by our esteemed chairman.
Yes, sir.
Who's out, uh, tonight. I'm filling in for him, uh, in person tonight. Um, I would like to ask Commissioner Gwen Flowers-Taylor from District One to deliver the invocation, and Commissioner Ryan Dalton to, from District Four, lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
If you will join me, please. Father God, we thank you for the blessings of life. We thank you for this day that we were fortunate enough to wake up, um, because some didn't. We thank you for the employees that we have here at Spalding County. We thank you for the blessings of this past weekend, a time where many people were able, many, many of our citizens were able to gather with their family and share love and friendliness and kindness in a country that we're free to do whatever we want to in. We ask you to be in this room tonight, give us guidance, give us patience, give us direction, and give us an understanding of the best things that we need to do for the citizens of Spalding County. We ask these things, Father, for you to be in this room tonight, in the name of your son, Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we've got a relatively short meeting tonight. They only, they only trust me to do so much, so we got a short meeting tonight. Um, I don't see any presentations or proclamations, so we're gonna go straight into. Um, I don't see any presentations or proclamations, so we're gonna go straight into citizen comment. Uh, as per our rules, I'm gonna read our, them here. Speakers must sign up prior to the meeting and provide their names, addresses, and the topic they wish to discuss. Speakers must direct their remarks to the board and not to individual commissioners or to the audience. Personal disagreements with the individual commissioners or county employees are not a matter of public concern, and personal attacks will not be tolerated. The chairman has the right to limit your comments in the interest of disposing the county's business in an efficient and respectable manner. All right, speakers, we've allotted three minutes to speak on their chosen topics as they relate to matters pertinent to the jurisdiction of the Board of Commissioners. No questions will be asked by any of the commissioners during citizen comments. Outbursts from the audience will not be tolerated. Common courtesy and civility are expected at all times during the meeting. No speaker will be permitted to speak more than three minutes or more than once unless the board votes to suspend this rule. Mr. County Manager, what do we have by way of people signed up tonight?
Yes, sir. We have four people who have signed up to speak this evening. Heather Goforth, if you would, please step forward, state your name and address for the record, please.
Heather Goforth, one two two Woodland Drive, Jackson. I've talked about the consequences of dogs riding away in kennels for years. It's inhumane, and it also sets both the dog and a potential doctor if they ever come up with failure. Behavioral issues come with keeping a dog in a tiny kennel in a crowded shelter for inhumane lengths of time. This exact situation played out recently. A dog named Brett came to the shelter as a criminal case in August of two thousand twenty-three. He was not held up for evidence, though. He was available for adoption the same week. Former staff and volunteers who worked with them say he turned into a different dog after a few months. Once a dog that enjoyed walks and affection, he turned into a dog that had to be carried and forced outside. When out of the kennel, he was completely stressed and anxious, just wanting to get back in the kennel. The shelter broke him. Brett lost his mind and he bearing on how to be a dog outside of the kennel walls or cope with general life stimulation. The shelter made an adoption posting, adoption seeking post on him recently describing, describing him as a dog exuding calmness, patience, and peacefulness. Brett was adopted following this post. Within a week of being adopted, the adopter was desperately trying to rehome him. They said the shelter was not truthful about how severe his anxiety was, and they ran over their head. But the dog and the adopter were set up to fail. The same situation is continually playing out in the shelter. For example, there's a dog named Christina currently in the shelter. It's been there for a year and a half. The shelter is marked and encouraged, always upbeat and happy. Staff who worked with her for a year report Christina was so kennel stressed and paced so badly that she would wear her paws are all to the point of bleeding, and they would have to lay towels in her kennel to give her a soft place for them to heal. Or Orville, he is another dog that's been at the shelter for a year and a half. The shelter is marking him as having a laid-back attitude. That laid-back attitude, though, is not actually laid-back. It's a dog stuck in mental misery. Staff who work with him for a year report he is severely depressed, that he used to be a happy outgoing dog, but now spends his time sitting in a bear, rarely moving, just staring at walls and completely broken. In the meantime, strays on the street are being denied every day to preserve kennel space for dogs mentally miserable. To name a few, just from the last couple hours alone before this meeting, from my personal Facebook feed alone. There's a mama dog over near Sun City. Citizens call it animal control, no answer. There's two older mangy puppies. Animal control said all they could do was come take their picture. There's two German Shepherds over near the Kroger. A C has been contacting numerous times, but unable to do anything as the county won't let them come in. There's a tan and black male that citizens have been feeding and try to take the shelter, but told they were not taking intakes, and the list could go on. On the medical side, dogs are steadily leaving the shelter full of communicable illnesses still. Another citizen recently adopted a dog from the shelter, where the adopters were told the dog was healthy, that they should not worry about the dog being grown on resident pets. Upon leaving the shelter, that dog tested positive for Giardia, hookworms, U T I, and heartworms. The Giardian hookworms piece may sound extra fresh to memory. That's because those were the same, those were two of the same spreadable parasites that the puppy bones had. One who died three days after being rescued, he heard about the last meeting. This goes back to sanitation, vaccination, deworming protocols actively failing and being inadequate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Carrie Gebler.
Hi, Carrie Gebler, six forty-six MacArthur Drive, Griffin, Georgia. Let's do some math. We keep hearing ad nauseam about the three inspections at the shelter. It's an ignorant proclamation. The shelter is on five acres. Spalding County has around a hundred and twenty-six thousand acres. That means that the shelter property is less than zero point zero zero four percent or less than four one thousandths of the area in this county. Let's go further. The shelter itself is building seven thousand seven hundred and four square feet. The county has about five point five billion square feet. So the shelter building comprises about zero point zero zero one four percent of the county. That's less than one one hundred thousandth of the area. The sheriff's department comprises about seventy-seven thousand square feet. That's zero point zero zero one percent or one one thousandth of the area in Spalding County. Now, Sheriff Dix was only concerned with the people inside the jail and ignore the other nine hundred ninety-nine one thousandth of the area in Spalding County, I have an impossible time believing that this county's residents, commissioners, or manager would be okay with that. I seriously doubt that they'd be up here bragging about how wonderful the inspections at the jail are if the other ninety-nine percent of the county's problems, crime, traffic violations, domestic incidents, missing persons weren't ignored. What would you do if the citizens were up here at every meeting blasting the horrible job Sheriff Dix was doing in ninety-nine percent of the county? Would you tell us to go and get a life? Would you sit here and repeat that the jail inspection went fine and we're just a bunch of busybodies? Would you tell us to just ignore the crime in our neighborhood and just deal with it? At this point, I actually hate to admit that I believe y'all would. Thank God that we don't have to deal with that reality because the sheriff actually does his job. Let's do more math. We've seen documentation that our county only takes in one dog for every eight thousand people, while other counties take in one dog per thousand people. That's horrific when we have people and animals being harassed and some animals killed for simply being in their own yard. The ignoring of open records requests and y'all doing nothing to encourage her to do her damn job, people wouldn't be requesting this amount of open records if there wasn't something to it. There's two German Shepherds who've been dumped at Lowe's, been there for a few days. I've received multiple calls and messages about them. Several of those people stayed in and writing or over the phone that they didn't bother to call the shelter because they never do anything. They were hoping I'd help, and I would if I had a place to hold them, but I don't need two more German Shepherds of unknown temperament or health coming into my home. The last German Shepherd I caught, the English Shepherd, cost me over two thousand dollars in lost revenue. Other people have taken dogs in because they can't stand to see animals suffer. And abracadabra, we now own a dog because we fed it because the shelter has locked doors most of the times. We don't need to hear the broken record of the three inspections at the shelter. If you're going to hold on to dogs indefinitely, you are required by law to provide veterinary care. The number of dogs coming out of the shelter with Giardia, hookworms, and heartworm is unacceptable. I, I wonder why you guys aren't just flipping us off from up there with your faces in your phones. It's ridiculous.
Michael Renew.
Michael Renew.
Hello, Michael Renew, five hundred Air Drone Way, Griffin, Georgia. Um, I don't know how to follow that act. Um, well, I had a statement, but, uh, my statement's gonna be useless tonight. Um, quite frankly, after a year of this, um, I'm not sure what this group of individuals are actually looking for. Um, they're very good at bringing up the negative on everything, never focusing on anything that's positive. Apparently, they are looking for the shelter to solve all the stray issues of Spalding County. Not gonna be possible. They've stated in the past what they would like to see done, more dogs taken off the street. I agree, more dogs taken off the street. Bring them in. Give them X number of times, put them down, bring in another twenty dogs off the street, and repeat the cycle forever and ever and ever. Amen. Killing your way out of the stray situation is not gonna solve the stray situation. Spay and neuter will solve, or help solve. Getting the courts to give out heavier fines will help solve. Um, we don't have a lot of personnel. I know they like to hold up Henry County as their model shelter. Henry County has a bit on payroll, numerous A C O's, A C O's on payroll. They have a spay and neuter program now that's payrolled. They have so much money, they're doing everything the right way, but one thing they're not doing with all this money is heartworm testing any of their dogs. I've been researching the whole entire state of Georgia. I'm working on it. I'm getting all kinds of different reviews from, no, we do no heartworm testing, to we only heartworm test if the adopter or, um, rescue asks for it. Others are saying, yes, we do, only before we get them spayed or neutered. Others, they don't have them spayed or, they don't have them heart checked until they walk out the door, so they're all over the place. There's all kinds of rules and regulations. Um, for each and every county, but the only county that's getting slammed for a total year is Spalding County. I could go pick a county and probably pick on them for a year and find many things that they're doing wrong. They don't like the state. It's obvious. They don't care what the state says. We do. Um, so at the very least, we all know what they really want. Y'all know what they really want, and they won't stop until they get what they want.
Matt Case.
Matt Case, uh, one twenty-seven North Thirteenth Street, Griffin. Um, not, not really much of a statement that I have. It's more of questions I have. Uh, so I live, if you're familiar with Griffin, it's one twenty-seven North Thirteenth Street. It's right next to where the old Handletier Church is, or was, excuse me, which is now converted, which was, I was told it was not gonna be a homeless shelter, which I'm happy for, but it was for the veterans, and that's, that's wonderful. I'm looking for what, what's gonna happen with the property next to us. Um, that's about, I would say, a little over a half acre, probably around a half an acre on the corner of Thirteenth and Broad. Um, it's a big banquet lot, lot. It was owned by the church, and since the church now doesn't, isn't owning that, so I, I believe that you guys own it now. Um, and with that, I just, just as a point, I lived there with my wife and two kids. Um, I wasn't a fan of coming, or seeing that the church got sold, because who wouldn't want to live next door to a church and have all that with you? But then it got sold, and next thing I know, I have prisoners, correctional, not prisoners, but whatever you want to call them, were helping out with the church. And are helping out converting that, and they are actually, they were at one point looking over my fence, and I, like I said, I have a four and a six-year-old. That I do believe is remedied, so I do thank you for that. Um, but that was just the start of it, and then now I'm just looking to see, basically, my main question is, is that something that is gonna go up for sale, or if it's something, and kind of what the plans are, because if it's gonna go like to commercial or something, is that I, I bought my house to live next to a church, and then I liked the point of it. It was an empty lot next to me. So I would definitely purchase the lot next to it if it is something that would go up for sale. I'm just throwing that out there as well, but, uh, just that was my main question. Probably won't take all three minutes, but, and that's, that's all I got.
So during citizen comment, it's, it's not an ask and answer, but if you want to hang out until after the meeting.
I would love that.
Get a card.
And we can give you the.
Give you the county manager's card.
Yep, I, because I've, I've been talking with Miss Di for.
Oh, perfect. Great, great, great.
Couple weeks now, so we're, we're, we're best friends, so it's all right. Thank you.
Well, our staff's just great, so we agree.
Mr. Chair, no one else has signed up this evening.
All right, we'll move on to, uh, section six here, uh, minutes. Uh, I'd like to entertain a motion regarding the approval of minutes November third, twenty twenty-five, the, uh, Board of Commissioners' work session, and November third, regular meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve all three sets of minutes as read, as read.
Yep, oh, we, and then the number seventeen as well.
Make a motion to approve all three sets of minutes as read, as read.
Yep, okay.
I thought he was making a motion. He's laying it. All right, I've got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed?
Aye.
There it is. I, Ryan, you're a second. All right, we'll move into the consent agenda. Get, okay, good, he's, uh, he's remuted. All right. Uh, I'd like to read the consent agenda items into the record here, and then we're gonna get a motion at the end. Uh, if anybody wants to remove any of the consent agenda items, just let me know. Number one, twenty twenty-six alcohol renewal. Consider approval for the following twenty twenty-six alcohol renewal for the retail sale of beer and wine of the following, sixteen forty-two North Hill Street, Griffin, Georgia, three oh two two three Christina Adamson for Family Dollar, no violations. Number two, twenty twenty-six alcohol renewal. Consider approval for the following twenty twenty-six alcohol renewal for the retail sale of beer and wine for the following, nine twenty-eight North Ninth Street, Griffin, Georgia, three oh two two three Laquisha Brownlee for Cleveland Food Mart, no violations. Number three, twenty twenty-six alcohol renewal. Consider approval for the following twenty twenty-six alcohol renewal for consumption on premises of beer, wine, and liquor for the following, fifteen fifty-seven Williamson Road, Griffin, Georgia, three oh two two four Jimmy Allen for Big Gems Wing Shack, no violations. Number four, twenty twenty-six alcohol renewal. Consider approval for the following twenty twenty-six alcohol renewal for retail sale of beer and wine for the following, twenty-two ninety-five North Expressway, Griffin, Georgia, three oh two two three Isatrie Saha Ishtar for Griffin Food Mart. Um, that's, this is a new ownership, I believe. No violations. Are there any items that the commissioners want to remove from the consent agenda?
No, Mr. Chairman.
If not, entertain a motion.
I would like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda in total.
All right, I've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, all in favor of, uh, approving the consent agenda in its entirety, say aye.
Aye.
All right, all in favor of, uh, approving the consent agenda in its entirety, say aye.
Aye.
All right. All right, first up under new business, uh, this evening is for us to consider the approval of the contract with Headley Construction for the demolition and construction of the Heritage Park Community Building, Heritage Park Gym, and authorize the county manager to execute the contract on behalf of the chairman.
Motion approved the county manager executing the contract on behalf of the chairman for the Heritage Park Community Building, um, with Headley Construction for the demolition and construction.
Now, I'll second that. I'm so excited for this. Um, any discussion? Look, this is a big deal, y'all. We've been working on this for a very long time, um, and I just, I really think this is gonna be a great project. I think it's gonna really affect, uh, not just the few blocks around that, but I think it's gonna be great for our entire community. Um, it's a real sign that our community really is one, that we're not two communities, or six communities, or five communities. We're one big community, so, um, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none. That is approved. All right, next is for us to consider accepting seventy-five thousand dollars for the Spalding County Senior Nutrition Program, the Meals on Wheels, in calendar year twenty twenty-six from the Griffin Spalding, uh, County Hospital Authority. Do we have anybody who wants to speak about this? This is a pretty routine thing. Do I hear a motion?
Yes, I, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept the seventy-five thousand dollars for the Senior Nutrition Program from the Griffin Hospital Authority Grant.
I'll second it, Mr. Chair.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Were all those in favor of accepting the seventy-five thousand for the Meals on Wheels, say aye.
Aye.
Hearing none. Were all those in favor of accepting seventy-five thousand for the Meals on Wheels, say aye.
Aye.
All right, all opposed? None. Fantastic. Now we know how many light seconds Seattle is away, and that's the, that's the science we're learning tonight. Uh, okay, old business.
Mr. Chairman, we have one more, item three.
All right. Let's see, uh, under new business here, consider approval of the renewal for, for alcohol licenses, um, that have met all requirements and have no reported violations during the current, uh, licensing period by the county manager. Again, we, we asked this to happen so that we didn't have to go through the fifty that there are, or whatever there. All right, so I've got a motion and a second to, uh, allow the county manager to approve these sort of all-mass. Any discussion?
Um, this, this says all renewals, meaning that they've already existed. No questions.
And no violations. This is something that we would just reup. All right, any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 We should count this light. Listen for the.
Aye.
All right, all opposed? Okay, hearing none. That gets accepted as well. You can tell how many, how many miles away the, the lightning is, you know? Um, okay, old business. Under old business, this meeting is for us to consider the update. Under old business this evening is for us to consider the updated final plat for Timon Point Phase One.
Per our conversation, the last BOC meeting, I was asked to put the amenities from Phase Two to Phase One.
Well, that's right.
The plaque copies reflect that. Have copies here if you'd like to see it. When the chairman gets back from his being out of town, he can sign it, and we'll be squared away with Timon Point Final Plat.
I can sign it tonight.
James can sign it tonight.
I'm empowered tonight.
Mr. Chairman, if, if I may say, this is where we ask them to start the amenities now.
Yes, they'll be part of Phase One now.
And, and it's my understanding that that was fine with them, that was their plan anyway. We just wanted to lock them into what they were promising our plan. This is a trust-but-verify type situation, and they were cool with that, so any other changes that were made from there to now other than this?
No.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the updated final plat for Timon Point Phase One.
I'll second.
All right, I've got a motion and a second to approve item one here in old business. Any discussion?
I'll get this one.
Nope. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor of your old business. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, eight light seconds. Any opposed? Hearing none, that's approved as well. Okay, and we'll come to section ten here, report of the county manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to express our sincere appreciation for the work that Henry County has undertaken on Rocky Creek Road. According to their county manager, Sherri Matthews, this is Henry County's second resurfacing package and demonstrates their commitment to improving infrastructure and enhancing safety for our communities along our borders. The planned full-depth reclamation is to replace the deteriorated roadbed along the intermediate and final asphalt layers, thermoplastic striping, and raised pavement markers, which is exactly what we do inside of our county. So they're doing the same thing for the roadway that leads into Spalding County up on the north end, just north of Jordan Hill, and I just wanna say thank you to Henry County for the work that they've done to bring that road up to standard, which would be our standard.
Did, did we do a project with them on that road?
We did not do a project with them on Rocky Creek, but we did a project just off of Rocky Creek at Hilltop. So they did half the road, we did half the road. That was last year, and that road resurfacing went so well that now they've moved to the road that actually connects Spalding County into Henry County from Timon, Jordan, Jordan Hill area, all the way up to twenty, so.
Did Rocky Creek get resurfaced?
That's what's being done right this minute.
Okay, so their, their part of the road is ugly.
Yes, ma'am, bad ugly. We, we would caution our, our citizens on our side, please choose a different route than Rocky Creek for the next month or so, because they are doing full-depth reclamation using a concrete slurry, which is what they used over on Jackson Road. That concrete slurry will adhere to your paint on your car, so don't drive on it. Just don't drive on it. Just avoid that area for a month or so, and then the road will be pristine, just like what we've been doing on, on our roads. So kudos to, to Henry County for their support. I would also like to welcome the GRPA State Athletic Committee to our community this week. The GRPA State Athletic Committee oversees the athletic programs for member agencies across the state of Georgia, all one-hundred-and-fifty-nine counties. Its role includes organizing and supervising statewide competitions, setting rules and regulations, and promoting high standards of sportsmanship. The committee also provides training for coaches and officials, encourages community participation, and works to improve athletic opportunities and state championships. By fostering collaboration among recreational professionals, the committee ensures quality, fairness, and growth in recreational sports throughout the state. This is the second consecutive year that they have chosen Spalding County as their annual committee meeting location, and I just wanna say thanks to TJ and his Parks and Recreation Team for bringing that committee back to Spalding County. Kudos to TJ. Also, I would encourage our community, take a festive drive through City Park and enjoy the sights of the season, including the Christmas tree that, that is lit. As part of Spalding Bright Celebration, we invite you to vote for your favorite Christmas card display created by local organizations, businesses, and government agencies. Your vote helps spread holiday cheer and recognizes the creativity in our community. Don't miss the chance to make your voice count while enjoying the magic of Christmas. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Anything from our assistant county manager, or anybody else on this side of the room?
Yes, sir, I'll be brief. I just wanted to remind everybody of the Christmas parade. Our annual Christmas parade is going to be Saturday, December the thirteenth, at six-thirty. So we encourage and welcome everybody to come and attend and see the awesome floats and everything else that the parade has to offer.
Will the county departments have floats in the parade?
We have several.
Yes, there will be several different departments with floats.
Okay, sounds good, okay.
I don't have nothing.
Anything from, starting outside? Ryan?
I attended the Spalding Bright, and I really enjoyed it. It was, it was fun watching the kids. I know it got a little rainy there toward the end, but it was really enjoyable. Matter of fact, I was standing there and somebody handed me a kid. It took me forever to find them. I got approached tonight, and I noticed coming up first of year, board appointments, there's a lot of interest out there, like Mr. Nelson here, so if anybody's got any openings on any board, he would love to serve the community and get involved. So, you know, if y'all need his information, reach out to me, and like I said, there's, there's a lot of people wanting to get involved, so. That's it.
All right, Mr. Quinn, that room is Quinn. All right, I'm going to allow Clay, if Clay, you wanna share anything remotely, I know there's a time delay, but we'll give you plenty of time. Now we gotta wait eight seconds.
We'll give you plenty of time. No, no, I'm very happy. Thank you very much. I hope everybody had a great Thanksgiving, and I'd like to comment on the excellent stuff that was done for the Christmas parade at City Park. That's all.
Thank you, Clay. I'll, I'll keep mine brief, because I think this might be our shortest meeting of the year so far. The Spalding Bright was great, not to pile on, but that was really, that was really a cool event. Everybody they, that I saw coming out, you know, it, it further proves that this is one big community, you know what I mean? The, you know, if you drive through, please vote for your favorite. You don't, you don't have to vote for mine or the sheriff's. It's not really a competition, but you can, they're there, you know? The sheriff's got a great one, too. The, the parade is gonna be really great coming up. We, we reached out, and barring an emergency vote or some other shenanigans that happens in Washington, and you never know, our congressperson is gonna be joining us for that parade. So that's pretty exciting to, we've, we've tried to reach out to our senators, but they haven't quite gotten back to us on, on our, our parade here, but they're certainly invited. We would love to have our federal delegation with us. Friday is the tree lighting for the city of Griffin here downtown. That's gonna be a fun event as well. You know, everyone's, of course, invited to that, that's always a, a fun event. If you look downtown, they're already getting ready for the parade and the tree lighting with all the, sort of, I won't, I won't call them barricades, but let me, let me, let me see, I'll get that exact time for you. Six o'clock.
Okay.
I thought it was at six.
Yeah. But that's always a, a good time, city church comes out and helps with stuff. As always, the second Saturday events are really great. That's gonna coincide with our parade this year. And one last thing, I wanna wish my law partner and mother a happy birthday. So just an inspiration to me and, and the rest of our family, so I wanted to wish her a happy birthday. All right, anything else from anybody?
I'll just adjourn.
We got a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
We got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, all in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.